Judge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a vision and justice for all. I should know this is the first time I've ever done this to me. I like to start right. Can we get roll call please?
Yeah. Lois Tiley.
Present.
Diane Dennis.
Here.
Christine Newman. Absent. Richard Horner.
Here.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Here.
And Sarah Tyte.
Here.
Approval of the, or any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to scratch letter C of new business, Safe Routes to Schools. We met today at four thirty and there are with Adam Jenks, who is a Safe Routes to School representative. And so we're going to make some changes on that. We're currently under the $10,000 grant level, so that is open. But we are going to go after $660,000. We can do about $220,000 per school of infrastructure upgrades, which would be walnut street sidewalks, etc.
Oh, nice.
So we're going to work on that the next few months. And I hope to have the full grant filed next, one year from today, actually. So I'm going to hold off on that, go through the proper channels and get all our homework done. Mark Benson joined us today and he has a lot of work to do on the school side to prove that this is something that we need. So it is a work in progress and a little too early to go and ask for permission for anything yet. So we can scratch that.
We're going to drop items season.
Yes. Did I take long to say that?
Pardon? You're going to make it straight to speak up. I want to hear you.
Sorry about that.
Any other changes? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Any public comment, announcements or public comments? There you go. Step right up.
Hi there. My name is Mick Levens. I'm your fire chief and I apologize for not being in a board meeting prior to this. But with my current job and everything, I usually work late evenings, afternoons. But I was able to get off a little bit early today, so I just wanted to stop and introduce myself. Kind of give you the what's going on with the fire department. We are currently have about 26 firefighters. Lois, I heard you talking about it's hard to get firefighters and it takes many departments to put a fire out now. That is true and that's a nationwide systemic thing. It's not just a St. Charles or a Saginaw County thing. So that is something that all law enforcement, EMS and fire services across the country is dealing with, are dealing with right now. We are working on retention, trying to keep our firefighters that we have now. We have a lot of money invested, a lot of time invested in them. And so we're trying to change our culture a little bit on our department of how things have ran in the past. And kind of go in a little bit of a different direction to try to keep people motivated. Still give them time to spend time with their family, but yet meet the needs of the community through our required training by the state and other requirements we have to do. One of the things we've really tried to do that we hadn't done very well in the last several years is community service. Working with your police chief, she's gotten us motivated. Almost every month now since I've taken over as the chief, we've done something for the community to help them out in some way or another. Whether it was some kind of fundraising, building a porch for some people that just moved to town last month. Food baskets, anything. We really want to get back involved in the community and try to support it. And that our citizens are doing what they expect from a fire department. Excuse me, and your police department. So is there any questions anybody might have or anything like that? No, I speak fast. I apologize. Any fast talkers up here? Yo, okay.
Well, good thing since you've been on board, so we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We're trying to, we are trying to recruit some more people. We are applying for a grant through the state that's due next week. The state has a grant several million dollars that we can use for retention, recruiting and training. So we'll be putting in a grant for that. We've also put in a request with the county for an ARPA grant for new turnout gear. Again, this won't have to be raising our taxes or anything like that. It'll hopefully come from the money that's already promised by the federal government. So hopefully that'll be some good news too, so we don't really have to go directly out of our budget to take us in a hole any further. We have one fire truck that has a, excuse me, we have our most updated fire truck, or the newest one we have, will be paid off the share, so we'll have no more payments on that. But again, we have a very, very aged fleet. So we will be looking at doing some things as far as replacing some apparatus and maybe reorganizing and downsizing some of our apparatus, not to cut the fire service by any means. But it doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense for me to have 40 or 50 seats on fire apparatus when I only have 26 firefighters the most on a good day. So along with some economics, we'll have to look at some different ways to continue to provide the protection that we are, we've always done for you guys, but in a more economical way. So just a heads up, if you see a fire truck for sale or something like that, it's not the end of the world. We're not broke. But it doesn't make sense for us to keep putting money into a truck that doesn't leave the station maybe more than once or twice a year or something that never gets used. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we've made a couple of tough decisions. We've sold a couple of trucks that we didn't really use. And there may be more down the road. We'll see what happens. But we're tracking the, how much, how often a truck moves, how many miles we're putting on it a year and how many calls it's actually going on. If it's not really moving that much or we're not filling the seats or it's not, there's no reason to have it, we will get rid of it and stop wasting tax dollars money to keep the maintenance on it, keep up the insurance on it, things like that. So I just want to let you know that we are trying to be fiscally responsible. We're not asking for any money at all. We've got a decent budget right now. I know there's been some rumors in the past where some of our firefighters wanted to come to some of the townships and ask for money for a mileage increase. And I can tell you right now, we do not need that money. We will work on making things more efficient first. And if that's an issue down the road, then we'll address it. But as of right now, we are not looking. So if you've heard that rumor from some of our firefighters in the past, we don't need it right now. So hopefully that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So you're smiling, sir.
I, I've heard that rumor.
Yeah, I know, yeah. I want to address it head on that you know that we are, we are trying to hold everybody accountable and try to work more efficiently and spend our tax dollars a lot wiser than we have in the past. Just not saying anything bad in the past, in the past happened, but we can do a better job and we're working on that right now. So if there's no further questions, I'll sit down.
Would you like to introduce your cohort?
I would, sir, but he might have a warrant, so, no, I'm just kidding. That's my captain, one of my newest captains, Zach Tiley. He's probably related to somebody on the board, but I don't want to give, I don't want to show any of this right now. He's highly motivated. You can tell by his smile back there and he has the best mustache on our fire department.
Looks awful solemn.
Thank you, Mick.
You're welcome, yes.
Thanks, Mick. Any other comments or anything? If not, we'll move on to Spicer Report. We have a substitute tonight.
You guys are stuck with me tonight, special Jack and Spicer Group. I've been here a couple of times with Don so far. Hart told me to keep it short, sweet today. Big thing I think we've got going on right now is the drinking water asset management grant. We have the mandatory pre-bid meeting tomorrow. We've got seven contractors interested in the project right now. And then the bid opening will be next week. For that, once we receive bids, we will be able to review them. And then I think we discuss the recommendation at the March meeting and get that moving forward on the grant. Right now, just plugging away at the grant as well with, with not only putting together the DSMI portion, but also the actual asset management stuff. We'll start getting into that as we move forward. Kind of switching gears to the water system improvements, phase one. I just talked to Don. We're going to meet next week and do another utility review and, and check out some areas where we're going to be tying in to the existing water mains and some of the connection details and whatnot. And that's moving forward as well. Any questions?
Only thing I would point out is under the DWM plan, the final bullet point, the bid opening will be February 18th, 2:00 PM. Here, if you want to join us for the bid opening, you're more than welcome.
I'll say.
Any present question?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Council minutes of the last meeting. Anybody have any questions on those? If not, do I hear a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve the village council minutes of January 12th. How's the court?
Court. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Moving on to the commission and committee reports. Downtown Development Authority, February 4th meeting. Anybody have any questions on those meeting minutes?
I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to. Okay. There I see it. About the car show?
Yeah. It was mentioned last minute, just as an idea going forward for maybe trying to partner the hometown days.
Well, this last year, hometown days, myself and two other guys who are into the old cars and stuff, we decided we would do that this year.
Okay.
So it's pretty much already, we already have a little committee and in fact, we just started.
Thank you for telling me, Kathy.
Right.
No, I'm just kidding. That's good to hear.
I wasn't sure how soon we were going to get it started.
Okay.
But it, there is going to be, that's already.
Huge need and I think it would work well and partner well with the food trucks and more vendors.
Right.
That's awesome to hear because I only had two people I was going to call that started their own north of Alaso and one downtown Alaso. So I'm trying to see if they could get it going. But if you already have it, I'd be happy to report back to the DDA that Kathy's committee, is that what we're calling it?
Sure.
All right. She's on it. Good to hear.
Any recommendations, ideas? We'll be happy to hear them.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Planning Commission meeting of January 20th. Any question on those minutes? Do I hear a motion to accept and file the minutes from the DDA meeting of 24, oh, February 4th and the planning commission meeting of January 20th?
Yes, I'll make a motion and accept the file.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Moving on to communications. You have a information out here on playing parks. Have any questions on that? Any information on it?
Self-explanatory.
You've got your review magazine. I'm sure you've all read it all the way through and studied it. Maybe not?
I did read some of it.
There's good information on planning and zoning in there. Some of it I've sent out to you over the years, but just for pressure.
Nothing further on that. We'll move on to the payment of claims. Anybody have any questions on those?
Yeah. I, I make a motion to approve the payment of claims in the amount of $89,539.20.
Support for the motion?
Support.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion's carried. Moving on to new business, budget discussion.
Here is the draft proposal for the 2022-2023 village budget. It is $2.9 million, a little over. I would like to set a budget meeting date of the 23rd at 6:00 PM, if that works for everybody, to go through this line by line. Check your calendars. I would, things I'd like to point out that this, so this budget, our property taxes increased, the values increased. If you recall, last year during COVID, we weren't sure what was going to happen with property tax values and our population diminishing. It went up well over 8%, so that's exciting news. With that said, wages, this includes a 2% wage increase as the personnel handbook states. Our healthcare went up 10.2%, something that originally was supposed to go up about 18.3%. So I think they tell you that number, so 10 doesn't sound too bad. Well done on their part, but it's still not an immediate, but thing that needs to be addressed just yet. There are alternative plans that we could, you know, go from the platinum to the gold or silver in the future. But honestly, a lot of our employees are here for the healthcare benefits and not the pay. That is the reality. As I've stated over the years, that's, one employee has a, as a significant other that has a pill that I think is like $33,000 a day. So this is very important to them and I think we need to commit, show that we are committed to them and their families. As you know, and Don will remind you every day if you, if you want, inflation rate currently is about 7%. Is that right, Don? So this 2% wage increase is actually a 5% decrease, but I kid. But our, the good news is our insurance went down about $1,200, so, and we'll get a little kickback from being in the MML liability pool. Another thing that I would throw in there, when I, when I got here, my second day here, we got a letter from the state saying that we were delinquent on our pension and OPEB liabilities, that we didn't have adequate funding. We're in the underfunded status at 59.1%. We are now at 66.3% and I expect that to jump to 60, between 67 and 69%, which is huge. So we are committed to the promises of the past while planning for the future. And when I got here, the OPEB, the other post employee benefits, healthcare, regulatory healthcare, was at about 5.2% funding level and then right now it's about 14.2%. So we're making our dedicated payments within this budget. It does include ARPA funds that we have set aside for part-time police. The rest of the funds, we are kind of committing towards water and sewer infrastructure and upgrades. It does include the state money for our DWM. It does pay off the dump truck that we haven't even received yet that we bought last year. And it includes a new DPW truck that has been asked for. I think we're, what's the status on trucks at DPW?
The one that will be replacing is the 2001.
2001, so it served its lifespan and you recall, or give me the name of what we're adding on as well. I think the total came up to about $39,000, but sorry.
36.
What are you going to throw on there?
We're going to buy a new portable sewer machine.
Portable sewer machine. So that is also included. Includes the DDA facade grant program to continue. It allows for the old-fashioned Christmas parade to be success. There's money for the planning commission, the zoning rewrite. There's probably more than enough there. There's, there's lots of money for park upgrades. I'm going to start with signage before this budget hits, so that we don't have to worry about signage and we can start looking at other things. But in two weeks, I'd like to go through every piece of this. With any questions, comments, concerns, if that would work for you. I was thinking six on the 23rd and Chris said that she should be up and walking and here for that. So I think it'd be good for her to be here and I'll go through it. This is the most important thing we do as a, as a board and as a manager. It is a guide to the future and we need to really delve in. So that is my, my hope and it gives you time to look through it. The capital improvement plan that is included in here is going to the planning commission next week to comb through and see if that's what, if they approve what we're trying to do in the future. And I will bring that to you next Friday if it is approved next Thursday. But we've pretty much purchased almost everything that was on that list that we were supposed to. Replacing the police car, DPW truck, new dump truck, new loader. We're not kicking the can down the road and using 30-year-old equipment anymore, so. Long story short, Don's going to be happy.
We're making progress.
Oh, there it is, progress.
See, this is, yeah, and I'm going to be retiring too.
Yeah. But if that works for you, I'd like to set that, that time and date and move forward. And if you have any questions throughout the next two weeks that you want to write down or call and ask about, please do.
We don't need a motion.
You need a decision tonight. It's, it's fine with me. I don't know how others feel.
Do you know what day that is?
6:00.
We don't need a motion, do we?
Not necessarily.
No. Okay. Let's move on to Little League, $1 park cleanup.
Yep. Every year they ask to use our park at the price of a dollar, a whopping dollar. They will start practice the week of April 11th with the first game starting May 9th. 2022, I think we should approve this and let them know so that they are all set. They will have a park cleanup date of April 16th with a makeup date set for April 23rd, should they be rained out. We'll work on the bathroom situation. We'll work on Porter Johns and we'll work on finding somebody to groom the fields. But with Paul joining the parks committee, we've got somebody on the Little League who's on the board, who's invested and we're getting all the information upfront and not after the fact. I'd like a motion approval for that today.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Who's that?
I'm second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A pose. Motion's carried. Rebel Magnolia.
They would like to come to the park once again on May 7th for their, what do you call it, the flea market?
Fall market. The spring market, actually.
Oh, spring market. This will be their third trip, one, two, fourth trip. Where they, they pay the $500 fee to use the park for the day with a $300 deposit. They've had some success. I think the vendors have been dwindling a little bit, but it seems to be a great event for town and the bars are packed and the restaurants are full. So I think it's something we should continue to do. We've heard, the first event, we heard one complaint about parking. It was from one of our own employees, so it didn't count. The second time was parking on the, the walking path, while walkers were trying to walk. But the third event, we haven't heard anything. So it's pretty well received, but I'm sure, you know, like anything, you're going to hear complaints. But by no means does it support the park's functioning or anything, but it's just a way to bring people to town to spend their money at the local restaurants at the time who were hurting. So they're takeout only at the time. So.
May 7th doesn't mix in with Little League or anything?
It'd be a weekend anyway.
Well, okay. What day it was?
It starts before their season.
I didn't hear them.
I'll make a motion. We allow Rebel Magnolia to attend the event.
Support for the motion?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried.
Last thing I add that I think the first market had over 4,000 people in town. The second one had 2,700 and the third one had 2,500 people.
Well, that's good. That's good.
Next item is a disc golf tournament?
Not so much an action item, but Sam Mayer would like to host a disc golf tournament at the park, May 21st. He's kind of doing a fundraiser to replace all the baskets on the current course. I'm not sure what this looks like at, at this time. We've discussed it in the past about going forward and making St. Charles a, one of the tournament hosts. He'll say some places can bring in $10,000 a weekend and just in teams. I don't know if that's how valid that is, but I'm sure, you know, you get 40 teams at, you know, 50 bucks a pop, whatever it is. But he's looking to raise funds to replace it and I, without the village paying for it. So I say we let him try it and see where he's at and if it's something we can partner with him in the future and replace any baskets that they don't raise funds for, because again, we did plan for some park upgrades. Just to make you aware, and if you have any concerns, questions, comments, then I can talk to Sam and get more details. As you, as you know, he kind of comes and goes and whenever you need him, he's working and not in town. But he's always willing to help us clear out trees back there. He replaced the signs on his own. He kind of facilitated the dugouts of the park being rebuilt, all new, so.
I think it'd be a great idea. I know that's been mentioned before. I would think no problem might be location like hotels and that kind of stuff. A little bit of a distance.
Don't know much about disc golf, I'll be honest. Don and I, when we worked with them that day, we were learning all about tournaments and they're showing us online where the different courses are and you can click on a course and it shows you everything you need. So it's pretty neat, but definitely.
No idea it was that big of a deal.
Yeah, it's a growing sport and it's, it's got a huge following.
And he built, you know, he did quite a, quite a lot of work down there that time, the cleanup. He isn't, he isn't just come and go. He's actually invested time, money and equipment and been making it better too.
Steve has talked to some of those disc golf players when he was walking at the park and he was amazed too. But he, because they, he told, they told him about the tournaments and they didn't get over 300 people in on a tournament and.
I mean, even you looked on there on a winter weekend, there's cars.
Right.
And Sam, and just part of this Evolution Disc Golf, he's sponsored from it and another person from St. Charles just joined it. Ricky Garza II is now sponsored by this Evolution Disc Golf. If it pops up on Facebook, I'm like, I better investigate you, like, what is this? So big deal and, and if they want to try to raise funds for new baskets, I say we want to try.
Absolutely.
Just to make you aware.
It's very well used, very popular.
And, and one of the biggest complaints we had is that, you know, the smell of marijuana while they're playing and the use. And Sam pointed out, and it's not really the disc golfers at all times. There's a couple houses nearby that grow and use and all legally and.
I think people made some assumptions and that's correct.
I know one place for sure. You can smell it every time you walk by, when you're walking in the park.
Also was pointed out, okay, we understand, also.
As long as it's legal, as long as it's legal.
It's not happening in the park.
Right. Well, that one.
Right next door.
Yeah. I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Mean emotion on that one?
No, sir.
Or does it, does it just lay, oh, dude?
I make a motion. We, we want to do a golf tournament at the park.
I'll support that. That will bring a lot of people here too. That's very popular. That's the cheapest thing we did in the park, because at the time we were tearing down the pool and putting up disc golf and people were so mad at us. And the park committee said, yes, we're doing disc golf and we walked immediately. It took off. But especially the first year, but it's always kept steady year round.
One of the things we need to think about is parking in that park as Little League is growing and disc golf is growing. Maybe the pool house isn't down yet, but I don't know. We've talked about pavilions there, but.
We always had the dream wish of paving that dirt area too.
I think we can get that done.
Had enough money then.
I think we can get that done and maybe the basketball courts.
I, I think we really, anything that we can do to improve our parks, I really think we need to. You know, I think they're, I hate to say, but I think that we're pretty far behind other communities in their parks, you know? So the more we can do for them, the better. I, I like it. So I'm all for this though.
Disc golf and Rebel Magnolia and anybody else, it brings a lot of people into town.
And, and the Little League cleanup day, we're going to partner with Saginaw Foundation and I think the varsity softball team that'll come out and help clean up and they're going to use that towards grants for new uniforms. So another way that the parks will help. It can't be at their own field. They have to help other fields. So it should be well attended and I just love people using the park, period, so.
So do we need to vote on that?
It always helps.
Yes. We need to vote on it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You guys are amazing. It sounds so good. I didn't wanna get...
Sorry.
Take it away. Departmental reports, DPW report.
So far, it's been a pretty tame one. I think it's good. On the water end, we did pick our disinfection by garlic sample, which was nothing above the maximum containment level. We did have a homeowner have a leak down on M-52 that they had to repair themselves. If we did get it done. We did another walkthrough for the water project down on West Bell. There's some areas that there's a lot of stuff in the ground and we're trying to figure out where the water main is gonna go in the right way. But we hitched up on our final walkthrough. Hopefully, we'll get it nailed down, the plan's completed. So we did have five snowfalling events, which isn't too bad. On the equipment repair, we had to put some money into the brakes of the old dump truck. Other than that, it's one thing that's going pretty well. But it's a pretty tame one, which is, we'll take it. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I just got a question, just 'cause I'm curious. Where you go down our road and all of a sudden, you know, that dips are going in there from the water going across, how come this time of year?
It's actually where the sewer goes across.
Oh, the sewer.
The leads and they backfill those with clean sand and the road. Those actually stay the same and the road actually heals.
Oh, the road does? I just thought, this time, usually that's when the frost leaves, the ground will get...
The ground's been moving, actually, quite a bit.
Really? Okay. I just wondered.
Another month and it'll be level again.
Yeah, probably will. Yeah, yeah, it wouldn't be surprising. It usually does.
Sewer cuts on Walnut and that's a good boat, so don't go too fast.
Yeah, yeah, you'd go flat if you do. Yeah, I just wondered.
Yeah, if you wanna see how much the ground will drag in the alley behind the Goodrich building.
Oh, yeah?
Bad.
It'll level out here in a month, but it's pretty rough right now.
I'm betting that.
I'll love you if you drive that shit.
Any other questions, Don? Any other comments from Don?
So, we're a little off, things are going pretty good. Have any concerns, let ours go and we'll try to address them as best we can.
Did we get the antique back running again?
Well, yeah, it has to run. There's no choice.
Only if it snows.
No, I actually, we put all brakes in at the drum, you can no longer get.
I was just curious.
Some of the parts are obsolete, but it's doing okay.
When you mentioned before, you didn't say, well, you gotta run it.
No, it's, it's good.
Yeah. Any other questions or anything? If not, let's move on to the Police Department report.
Good evening. Boy, I probably don't have much verbal to add. It's been a cold January month, so we're just doing paperwork and prepping for the new year.
The school doesn't still wanna have to put in any money for a school officer?
Um, the prior superintendent was interested in doing that, so right now, we're moving in that direction. It's not gonna be a quick process, but...
Well, I'm glad you're moving that that way, anyway.
Want to see that occur for next school day, ideal.
On the school visits, is that a push toward maybe getting a resource person?
But you get a grant for that, though, don't you? For the, well, for the school resource officer, we'll be writing a grant again this summer to attempt to get a grant to cover the, it would cover about seventy-five percent of the cost of that officer for three years. So that will happen and probably not be until summer. I think that grant comes out usually in August. But as far as the school visits, it's just we're transitioning from people just not used to seeing the police anywhere or not seeing the police at the school and why are the cops here and what's wrong? And we're trying to transition from that to, hey, they're just used to seeing us two, three times a week. We'll stop in at a lunch hour, we'll stop in between break. They know we're around. Following also Oxford and the dynamics of that school shooting, they need to know that we're here. They need to know that we're safe, that they're safe, we're not far away ever being in the village. So it's kind of a transitional time of really being, of them being aware and being comfortable with our presence and parents being aware and comfortable with our presence and getting rid of the stigma of the cops are here, what's wrong? That's just gotta, and that moves us toward, when we do have school resource officer, it'll just be a normal, normal, healthy, good thing to have an officer in that room. And we value the kids, we value education, we value the school and their safety and their health and wellness is a big priority for the police department.
That's great. That's great.
Any kind of questions, thoughts?
When you do these, are you able to put the February schedule, like next report, like say March? Can you put March's schedule in there, too? So we're not seeing the schedule at the end of, like, it's February, I have a January schedule?
Yeah, we did that just because some of that's public and we don't necessarily want people to know when we will be on duty. But you guys can see that we've been on duty. But your preference is for the council, if the council would rather see what's coming up in February, we can do that. That's just something that we made a change just for... Yeah, just the way that...
It's a good thing to handle it that way. You don't want the community knowing.
And you know, I think I've talked to many about the, just the short staff of law enforcement across the county and the state. And I don't necessarily want people to know, you know, what our schedule looks like, but if that's your preference, then I can change that. So that's gonna be up to you guys.
It's probably a good thing that to know.
Your car is, oh, it's off.
Even if we have one up here for us to see.
Okay.
I would absolutely, if you pass them around, anyway.
No, I don't think so either, but...
I guess I would prefer, you know, the month ahead.
Well, I can, I can, I'll switch back if that's what the preference is then, or, yes, you guys tell me.
Anyone else prefer it that way or you wanna leave it the way it is?
Well, if we had just one here.
Yeah, if we put one here.
We could look at here. I think that would be enough for me. I'd rather not the whole village know when and why. My, it's the way I feel.
Doesn't matter to me either.
And if you'd like to step in at any time individually, I'm sure that there's always one hanging up, but you can make something available individually that wouldn't be a concern.
Any opinions on that, Ray? Don't make a difference? Good the way it is.
Thank you.
Other questions? Move on to Building Inspector.
Well, you're starting off slow. I have three permits so far. Electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. And complaints, I have five. One is resolved, the junk vehicle was removed. I have another on Flint. I'm gonna have to send a third letter to the vehicle. There's still one there, but one is gone. Or two there, so. The commercial vehicle that was on Water Street, I haven't seen it there in several weeks now.
Where was that at?
Right on the corner of Water and Miami.
No tracks either, right?
There aren't even tracks in the snow, so I think it's gone. That's all it is, unless you guys have any questions for me.
I have one, Scott. That dumpster at Mary Brown's house on East Walnut and Saginaw, hasn't that been there for a while?
Which one?
The yellow house right on the corner, East Walnut and Saginaw Street.
It seems like it has been there quite a while.
Billy's dumpster there?
Oh, it's a little into it.
I tell you how long. Seems like I've seen it there for a while.
It's been there a while.
All right, well, let me talk to you after the meeting and get more directions to where it's at so I can hear you.
Okay.
I'll get after it.
Okay, thanks, man.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a public comment. Anyone have anything they wanna step up to the mic? Introduce yourself.
My name is Jason Jovic and I live at 212 West Bell Avenue. And my property backs up to Water Street by the river. And I came here a couple of years ago and asked for a sign to be put up on Water Street saying there's children playing. I think that's what it says.
There was one out there.
Yeah, there's one out there, but it doesn't seem to be working. People are still flying up and down the road. I almost got into a fight with a guy last year and all I did was throw my hands up, like, tell him to slow down, and he ended up stopping and getting out of his car and wanting to fight about it. And we were out there playing softball with my daughter. I'm a coach on the softball team here in St. Charles. And I had all the kids back there playing. And I didn't know if there's anything, my neighbor's dog just got hit through, John Wilding. His dog got hit two months ago by somebody flying down the road, cutting through. And I didn't know if there's anything that can be done about it. Like a no-through, no-through, you know, no-through traffic down that road? I mean, I don't see, I don't think that's a big step to do something like that. But people are cutting, what they're doing is, you can't turn left on, I don't know the name of the road.
Saginaw Bell.
Saginaw, okay, you can't turn left onto Bell from Saginaw, off of Saginaw. And they're going forward and turning down Water Street and going that way. Or they're coming from the other side of the road on Water Street. I'm watching them. I live right there, so they're coming across. And when they see the light is red, they'll just go straight across and fly down the road. And, you know, they're doing thirty, forty miles an hour when they should be doing, you know, twenty when there's kids playing out there. The neighbor kids are always out there playing basketball. And I just thought I would come up here and see if there was anything I could do. I've actually stopped Julie on the other side of the road and asked her if she could watch the road, you know, if anyone's flying up and down the road, to maybe pull them over or do whatever she's gotta do, but...
Is there a speed limit sign on that road? There should be.
Yes, yep. It's twenty-five, but... They're just trying to beat the light and cut through right there. And we always play back there on that little piece of property that's on, I think, by the village.
Behind the funeral home in there, in that area? You're talking about that property behind the funeral home?
Yes, exactly, yep, that's where we...
Along the river, Riverbank as well.
We have little softball games there.
Even if they control more often? Start writing some tickets down that street.
If you got any suggestions, you know, bring it in, bring it...
Okay, well, that is my suggestion to put a traffic sign.
Know what?
Know-through traffic, so nobody can turn down that road or go straight.
Can't do that. It's got an exit, so you can't, I don't think you can block it off. You don't wanna block it off.
Even if you put one there anyway, they're still gonna do it.
And then you can, you know, then she'd have a reason to pull people over, or the police department would.
Maybe it needs to be watched better, more carefully or more patrol that area.
Yeah, but you can't pull them over for going, cutting through and...
Well, if they're speeding.
Yeah, yep.
Any suggestions?
I can definitely make it one of our more frequent go-throughs. I know I go down there, I don't know if you see me, but I spend with the neighbors probably on a, you know, by me basis, so I'm down the road pretty often. The other, the other big thing that I see that happens on Waters, people leaving the bar and leaving, you know, they just, they go down there and the stop sign goes down through that, so... Yeah, so we see a lot of that. I'll, can I sit and I'll sit and chat with you and we'll let them finish this up and let's, I'll get a couple ideas for you on what we can, we can do specifically. If we can't, then we'll leave it in there.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you.
Can we have a follow-up? Can we have a follow-up on that, like maybe next month or something? Just to make sure this young man gets his problems solved one way or the other, so we can... Can we come up with something different if that doesn't work?
Yep.
Well, if there's no further comments, can your motion do adjourn?
I'll make a motion and adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Please adjourn.